And the structure is approved. It's not open to management. I mean, I want to put them on paper. They are required to be prepared. And so those are two things. I want to understand the confusion. And it's very unfair even for us to apply a term of duty and it's selective. Then you can't do that. You can't do that. That's not my intention. That's not my intention. I have to tap into that. I have to tap into that. I have to tap into that in the public interest. And in terms of the laws of the nation, and in terms of our decisions as a council, we want to go inside. They are wanting to stay here. It is for the good of the city. To teach us how to govern. But while there is confusion, I plead with you now take responsibility. I would like to be judged with this responsibility to look into the issues that are in the confusion. And it is possible.
Thank you, Ambassador. This council.
There's no one who can help us. The people who are scared of us. They're scared of us. They don't want to see 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 us.
Uh, yeah.
Sorry, Your worship. I know. My leader has spoken as a gentleman. He said, "My time is a gentleman." He said, "My time is a gentleman." The leader has spoken. He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it." He said, "I'm not going to talk about it."
Thank you, Ambassador. Do you want to inform me about the issue? As far as I'm concerned, it's a bad idea. But if you care, then I'll speak to you.
He said, "He said, "We have to talk about it."
Uh, I think you have to say what you want to say.
I don't want to talk about it. I don't want to talk about it.
I will tell you. Let us say something. I will tell you. Let us say something.
Let us say something about city funders. You can't do that. You can't do that. Because you can't do that. You can't do that. As you can't do that. 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 As you can't do that. You can't do that. You can't do that. But you can't do that. You can't do that. You can't do that.
Thank you, Ambassador. Yes.
Yeah, I know. 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 Because you know, you know. I was talking to you. You know, I was talking to you. You were talking to me. So, Your worship, because exercise is the reason why I am here.
Thank you, Ambassador. Thank you. I'm sorry, but I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sometimes, because I'm always trying to help you. I mean, it's true. 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 I mean, sometimes, when you're trying to help someone, you're trying to help them. You're trying to help them. I mean, you know, you know. You know, you know. You know, you know. I mean, you know, you know. You know, you know. I mean, it's not special that you don't mean that. I mean, but what you get, I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, man. I'm sorry, man.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, uh, Ambassador.
Thank you, Your worship. Uh, I want to talk about my structures are in danger. It's a matter of concern. It's a matter of concern. The mission is Joseph from Kansas. And the work of God, uh, so I think my poor husband, um, he is a writer. And we got someone, as soon as Joseph, kind of, from Kansas. Oh, yeah, I can explain. Uh, you are part of Kansas. He is a part of the country. And I can't stand it. I don't want to make it as a good person. I don't want to make it a good person. I don't want to make it a good person. Then, when I'm located, uh, I'm trying to help people. But I'm not going to help them. Uh, I'm not going to help them. I'm trying to help them. And they want to help me out. But the challenge is to eat and drink. Because I'm trying to help my structures, my, I'm trying to improve my, my, my rural city. So, you can't help me by helping people. I'm trying to help the streets. So, the shop in the city, I'm trying to help them. Those are the structures. And it's saying that they should eat about development control. And the money should be taken from development control. So, 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 Kansas. Uh, so, uh, I want to get permission from House Department. Uh, I want to get permission. I want to pass. But you want to solve the issue. Uh, I'm going to, uh, map there. I want to operate it. When I operate it, I operate it. And if you fail, you're not allowed. Uh, if you fail, you're not allowed. I don't want to do that. I can't do that. But, uh, I'm sure, I mean, I want to help you. Space, I want to operate it. I just want to find a company. I'm going to ask you, because I'm not going to. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And I'm sure I conclude the process that you're going to do. Because I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You try to, uh, you try to, uh, and it's, uh, I want to allocate. Uh, you want to pay. I mean, this guy. Yeah, this guy, oh, yeah. I'm going to help you. I want to take some money. They need space. They want to gather more services. And they want to gather more services. I'm going to buy a parking space. So, we are doing something to create space for those people affected. I just want to find. Don't try to, try to ignore it. We are doing something. But if I was to make papers, I would want to find. Was it, I don't want to make it. Because I don't want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Your worship.
Thank you, Ambassador.
And we, my worship, in that city, Kansas, you know, we're getting more structures. I should be able to do it. I love you, so much. I want to do it. I want to do it. Because I want to do it. But I want to do it. 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 What's this thing? Look at this.
Okay. Yes, Ambassador.
I think it's a lot of things. I guess I'm a bit like my job. I'm going to ask you about that. I don't want to do it. I'm sorry. Then, my council, I'm going to ask you about that. You should go to the other. So, it's in us. But I'm going to tell you about it. So, I'm going to tell you about it. I don't want to do it. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you about it. I'm going to tell you about it. I'm going to tell you. 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 I'm going to do it. I'm going to tell you about that. I'm going to tell you about it. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I think it's a lot of things. I'm going to do it. 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 Then, I'm going to do it. 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 Because I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. My job is to help you. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it.
Thank you, Ambassador. I think you, Your worship, you have to say something. Because you can't do that. You can't do that. I can't do that. I can't do that. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can't do that. I can't do that. I'm staying here. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can't do that. So, you can't do that.
Is the management. Uh, engineering is identified. Some sites, we have more than ten sites for schools. Including, uh, two for secondary schools. So, in our twenty twenty five budget, there is a proposal for a school from Kansas. Not that one for, we will be assisted by, but from Kansas. And then, we are bringing a report to the relevant committee, where we are, uh, seeking a resolution to advertise for expression of interest. Because you can't do that. Because my mission, my church, can not be private individuals, can not be organizations. If they can take up the sites, they are around the city. Because they want to work on our schools. But you can't do that. 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 For dead dimensions. So, those are the plans, Your worship, coming from management. Thank you.
Thank you, my judge. Maybe on that one, you are saying you have identified ten, more than ten, I mean. It's a guy, if I'm expression of interest, I didn't know finger along those lines. Like, we do that. But I think you, you know, you can't do that. Maybe, three blocks per inch, or three blocks per inch. More or maybe stay. Maybe, you must think along those lines. But the score is sure. Twenty twenty five, chairman. I don't think we can do that. Choose a lot of prime. Choose a block, choose a block. Sure, you can. All right. Any other, any issues? Yes, Ambassador.
Uh, I think it's a lot of things. I'm going to tell you about the stadium. 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 Because after now, I'm going to tell you about the stadium. It's too bad. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, chairman. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Your worship. Uh, the issue, your boys, including, you, 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 those are some of the capital projects. They require better trade. That's when you design. Thank you, Your worship.
I hope you answered, uh... Ambassador. Of, do you have any other issues? City agreement, prior to nine. Chairman. You want to hear about it? You want to hear about it? Minister of State, why you want to say? Say, my boy, for all the...
Thank you, Your worship. Uh, this may be the profound worship by the fifth year. And it's a significant improvement in the support. It's that the problem, or then, the blood. In the own package, it's a good thing. I'm fishbone. I'm a fish hook. This is a positive. Uh, I'm glad. The, uh, fellow guys, uh, and the proof, I mean, the three group, uh, partner, uh, house. It is, my, yes, I'm good to the balloon. Our teacher, in the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, what is to learn? Uh, I'm not alone. So, I'm going to try to continue to the, uh, to the, uh, the, uh, so that we're able to bring this in our city. Uh, very soon, I'm going to, uh, uh, about, uh, about, uh, the future of the future. We promise you by December, also, uh, that the range of the rains will be fine. That place is a bad, it is a full. Uh, shadow, don't you, 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 it's small. It's tender on the engineering department. The, uh, uh, uh,